Okay, okay. What is going on family? It's your brother Divine Prospect Kingdom Harbinger Ministries. We are back. This is our light work Tuesday session. This is January thirty first, twenty twenty three. I know you guys haven't seen me on camera of all of twenty twenty three yet, or according to this Gregorian calendar, this twenty twenty three. I do apologize for that. There's been a very busy month and February might be semi-busy as well. But I'm doing best to adjust. I am active. I share stuff continuously on the Patreon, on the community tab, as well as on Clubhouse. Clubhouse for me is very easy to get on, to get involved, etc. So I'm gonna try to bring as much of those conversations uploaded to this channel so you can follow along on the plethora of dialogues that I have on there. Also, I can, now that I have Clubhouse on the computer, I can now bring you into live sessions as well, right? We could do a live stream with a live session with me on Clubhouse, which I think is very fascinating now that I have the ability to do that, okay? But I did want to chime in and say what's up to everybody now that my shift is over. I can spend a little time in chat and see what's going on with y'all. And we can get it cracking. We can get it cracking. All praise to the Most High, man. I thank the Most High for allowing KHM to exist. We continuously do what we can to help people, and especially those in our community, to get a leg up on life, to minimize or reduce the sides of illness that they experience each and every day by providing them with program services and products to better the quality of life that they have, to remove any hindrances and obstacles so that they can get a clear path in their journey with Yah. And to prepare the people, right? So they can receive Yah when the time comes and in interim. We're not gonna sit and wait, look them in the sky for something miraculous to occur. We're gonna put our hands to the plow. We're gonna get this kingdom worked done, alright? And that's just how we're gonna give it up, alright? Um, so, since we are waiting for more people to trickle on in, also anybody out there that needs any kind of credit repair, debt elimination, or financial planning services, Jubilee May Emission Program does offer that. If you look in the description of this video, you'll be able to see the contact information in there if you're interested. We also posted a promo video of Jubilee May Emission on this channel as well. So please check it out if you need it. If not, share it with somebody that you know who may need it. And let's see if we can give our people their Jubilee back because it's overdue. It is extremely overdue, alright? Also, our NatuPath Eating Services, if you, anybody you know is experiencing any kind of health ailments and wanna take an alternative approach in the holistic fashion to recovering and healing, getting a road to recovery and a road to healing, NatuPath Eating is available for that. Again, that email contact is in the description below as well. Also, I will be posting some promos for other businesses in our community on the channel as well, so they can get more visibility and more people can patronize those businesses and they succeed as well. Because you're only as good as those you celebrate when you have nothing to celebrate. If you can celebrate with those during the times where you have nothing to celebrate, that is not only a testament of your character, but as a testament of what you will receive in return, right? And the only way to do that is to ensure that everybody that is around us is in front of us or is beside us. If anybody's behind us and they're trailing and we don't do anything to push them forward, then we have done a disservice to our community, right? So make sure we keep that in mind. Alright, so as y'all trailing, trailing on in, let me go ahead and shout out those who are already in the chat. Shout out to You Love Yah. Shout out to Teagan Francis, Kaya Houston, Damon Williamson, James Lockhart, Nielante, Scott Garrett Hedley, Get Wise, Psalm Fifty One, Lisa Anderson, You Love Yah, Lataris Harrison, Jedediah Yah, or Jeda, Jeda, Jedediah. Uh, my bad. And who's that? Meech Mashful. Peace and shalom to you. I know a lot of people, you know, especially the trolls and the haters, it's like, yes, Divine is gone. He's off YouTube. He's not doing live streams no more. Well, little do they know, little do they know, just because we're not on screen don't mean that the ministry has stopped. It's not what's going down. Shout out to FL. I see you in the building. Alright, you see this right here on my hat? Let's talk about a podcast coming soon. I'm waiting on the backdrop. I should have it in about two weeks. The backdrop so that we begin shooting that podcast series that would be exclusively on Patreon. And if you're not on the Patreon, go to www.patreon.com backslash Divine Prospect. Sign up. There's hundreds of posts on there. We have over eight hundred posts on there. And we continuously add more and more content weekly. So make sure you are checking out the Patreon as well. Also, if you're not on Clubhouse, put Clubhouse on your Apple phone, your Android phone, right? Just look it up in the Apple App Store, Google Play Store, download, install it, set up your account, and follow me on there at Divine Prospect, okay? I'm frequent there almost every day or every other day, and I'm in conversations almost every day or every end day on Clubhouse. So that is another place where the KHM Ministry is branching out in and making some headwinds. We had a lot of interesting conversations past week. I know one of the interesting ones is a room that I was pinged in and I was invited to the stage and had a dialogue with people who, you know, are into like the black conscious community kind of train of thought, you know, the cesspool of biblical pseudo-ship. And this room or this house called the Ancient, the House of Ancient Magic. They invited me on stage and the name of the room was, is the Bible accurate? I was like, okay. And we went through a plethora of different discussions. I mean, we went from Kemmit to the Ancient Aries to Judaism to, are you really Israelite? I mean, it is fantastical, this type of pseudo-ship that came from out of that room. I was really expecting more, but then again, I don't know why I was expecting so much. And I did two subsequent sessions after that, trying to educate our people like, you gotta correct all of this stuff, man. People are still using the Israel, ISIS, Ra, now. And then bringing up deities saying that they're precursors to L. Rashif saying he's a precursor to L when he shows up at the same time as L in the Ugaritic text. How is he a precursor? Baal is the son of L according to the Ugaritic texts, not Rashif. Rashif did not succeed L. Nothing happens to L. L is always there because L doesn't physically get involved in any of the rabble-rousing that occurs with the other deities in the Ugaritic texts. So when they brought up Rashif, who's known in Syria, not so much a deity in Canaan that was worshiped, mostly in Syria, saying that that's a precursor to L. Yeah, and then asked me, are you an Israelite? And then I go into the air and I go into my mother's side. I said, you wanna go to my father's side? He's like, no, no, don't go into that. I'm telling you, man, it's, it is hilarious. So when you go to Clubhouse and you follow me on Clubhouse, when you go into my profile, just scroll down, you'll see all the other sessions that I was in and go check it out for yourself. But yeah, I think that that is the next frontier when it comes to social media and forum type of discussions, right? And that's why I'm on there is it's easy to jump in and get started. It's not like YouTube. We had to get set up and everything like that for YouTube, which I don't mind, right? Because y'all are my family. Y'all are my number ones. Oh, we almost at sixty K on the channel, almost at sixty K. And our, the video that we have on this channel, the Canon video and Professor Griff is almost at two point five, well, two point three million views on that video. You know what I'm saying? So many people are coming through to the platform from that video and have been hitting me up constantly. And I'm having some great discussions, putting them onto game, etc. Because then they go and look at the other content on the channel, etc. So let's get this out to the masses. Make sure that you subscribe if you're not already subscribed. And if you haven't subscribed, you subscribe it now. Go back and check out the archives. Also, make sure you like this video. If you're enjoying the content, make sure you share it everywhere. And let's go ahead and write on the back of that YouTube algorithm and I'll bring this information to the masses, right? Alright, so with that being said, let's see who else has joined us and then we're gonna go ahead and get started. Shepherd, yes, you can ask questions. This will be a Q and A session as well. I'm gonna probably rock out with y'all till about six thirty. So we got about almost an hour of content on our light work session. Then push as hard as I can to go live again this upcoming Friday. And if I have time on Thursday, I'll do another light work session as well to kind of make up for this past, what, two, three weeks of me not being on camera. But nonetheless, I appreciate all the support that I've received from y'all. I truly appreciate that. Y'all checking in on me. I appreciate that. Keeping me in your prayers, sharing the content, commenting on throwback content as well. Supporting the Patreon. All of this goes a long way, you know what I'm saying? And I'm always encouraged every time I interact with anybody that watches this content, you know what I'm saying? And it would not be possible without you. So I appreciate y'all for that, alright? Alright, let's see who else is, who else is up in here. Shout out to Taj Jordan, hopefully I'm saying that right, Luke twelve fifty one truth. James Lamb, shalom. James, I think you sent me an email. Well, sent us an email and I took a look at it. So let's, let's get on a call. So what you can do is in below, click on the link in the description and let's set up a call. I have about, what, three or four calls that I gotta make up for. So if you, if we had a call scheduled and it did not happen, just shoot a text to the six, seven, eight number you see going across the screen or in the description below. If I have not already spoken to you, and I will try to accommodate you outside of my normal scheduled hours to have a conversation, because I don't wanna make sure anybody gets overlooked. And I wanna make sure everybody has the one-on-one with me so we can talk outside of any other white noise and chitter chatter, alright? So shout out to Panther DeNora. Shout out to my brother Jay Fierson in the building, sister Jaslyn Berry, shalom. Ah, Kazakhya, shalom. His Abigail, shalom. Let's see, who else we got? Who else we got? Ariel, shalom. Linda Rick, shalom. Michael Woodward, shalom. Let me see, Adidas Star, Love Jah, shalom. Raw, Raw Liges, shalom. Uh, let me see, what'd you say? Meech Mashful. I've been binging all the content and recently joined the Patreon. Great work and food for thought and prayer. Thank you so much. I greatly appreciate that. Uh, let's see. Oh, is this, this sister Trinicia? What's going on? KHM in the building. I see Scott Garrett Hedley in the building, James in the building. I see Jaslyn. I see Jay Fierson, all KHM, man. KHM in the building. Yo, make sure you guys share this video, right? I'm gonna give you a whole, what, forty-five minutes worth of Q and A feedback information. I have tons of material that I've been reading on. I've been reading on recently on this book right here. This is a journal of biblical literature. This is volume one forty-one, number three. And there's a series of different topics, essays as written by different scholars on different subject matters. And yeah, this has been keeping me busy. The one that I'm on right now is Enthroned and Coming to Reign, Jesus' eschatological use of Psalm one ten and one and Mark fourteen and sixty-two. And the other one was the Allotment of Canaan and Joshua in Numbers. Alright, very, very good essays on those subject matters. Dope, dope as usual. And then where's the other one? Let me see. Let me see. It's got so many books around here. Um, I had, I can't find my other ones. I must have put them up. But there were some new ones that I had, bought about four, five new books. Oh, here's one of them right here. Alright, this is Literary Approaches to the Bible, okay? So what this does is that it approaches the Bible as literature, as literature. And it does a comparison and contrast of it with other literatures of the Ancient Aries. And then it goes into different approaches in regards to exegesis based on the literary analytical method, right? Excellent book to have in your library. Also, I have one on the Patreon that deals with social. What is that one? The one on Patreon is social and let me pull it up real quick. The one on Patreon is Social and Historical Approaches to the Bible. And they're both from the Lexham Method Series, okay? There's three of them. Another one that they have is Textual Criticism of the Bible, and that's the third one in the Lexham Method Series. I recommend you get all three of them, all three of them, right? Excellent insight and perspectives on ways to extrajet the text outside of the theological approach that most people typically take, right? And if that's the only approach you take and you're doing it for self-editification and a better relationship with Yah, more power to you. However, if you really wanna get into the world that shaped the scripture and be able to see the scripture within the ancient historical and cultural context in which it thrived from, and also find ways to see how the veracity of the text holds up under scrutiny over time, I suggest you retrieve these additional pieces of material to read, study, and absorb the knowledge, right? It's only gonna strengthen your faith even more, alright? Alright, let me see. Let's see. Jedediah says, hit the like button and share. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. Peace be still, shalom. Thesus GQ, shalom. Yahosef Ben Yisrael, shalom. Yoel Ben Yisrael, shalom. Dennis McMillan, oh, there you go. Shalom Ak. The Orthodox More in the Building, shalom. Are you available for an interview for Black History Month on DT for you? Sure. But it would have to be probably the last week of February. So shoot me, email the Orthodox More at kingdomharbinger@gmail.com. One of my sisters will grab it, go into communication with you with the details and we'll see what we can schedule, okay? Shout out to A Young in the building, shalom. I see you. Tyrell John, shalom. What's going on? Let's see. I think that's everybody right there. Uh, let's see. Okay. Alright, so let's go ahead and let's get into the Q and A and anything else that comes from out of that. But before we start, I wanna see from the people in the chat, hit one if you're on Clubhouse, hit one if you're on Clubhouse. Now, if you wanna use Clubhouse on your computer and not your phone, let's say you wanna use your computer instead, which I recommend, right? There's an application called Club Deck, and I'm gonna put that in the chat, okay? Alright, here you go. Click on that link, download and install the application, login or set up your account on Clubhouse, and you'll be able to access it from your computer, your laptop, your desktop, etc., okay? Otherwise, you can still use the mobile app on your tablet or your phone, okay? Alright, so, um, let's see. All ones, okay, cool, cool, alright? So again, if you're not on Clubhouse, I highly recommend because those conversations are very engaging, very lively, etc. It's been a while since we had a guest on here to kind of build with back and forth, especially those who come forth with their grievances. But they are welcome to come on. Anytime they see the notification and that we're live, I highly doubt that anybody's gonna jump on right now to give that, to wanna inhale the smoke that they can get. But if not, let's open it up to the people, sort of address some questions as much as we can, alright? Alright, so let's go ahead and get it popping. So let me see. Shout out to Nicole Birch in the building. Shalom, a salute to you too, sis. Rainy Pow in the building, shalom, shalom. Ishmael Abdurrahman, shalom. Alright, so let me go ahead and see. So Don Williams, okay. So Don Williams, thank you for reaching out. You said, is it, is it a way to get in contact with you to receive a medical exemption form for vaccinations for school? Yes. Shoot us an email at kingdomharbinger@gmail.com and we will definitely take care of you, okay? We'll help you generate that and you should be good to go. So yes, we do offer that. Email us at kingdomharbinger@gmail.com, alright? And anybody else, if you need a, if you need a religious exemption from vaccinations for school or university or your employer or whatever the case may be, or let's say that you need the Sabbaths off or the feast days off, we're more than happy to assist with that, to help you with a religious exemption for that. Also, we will be releasing the dates for the feast days for this year. Probably by the end of this weekend, by Sunday, we should have it up. So make sure you guys are checking the community tab. And also, if you're on Facebook or Instagram, Twitter, or any other place where you follow us, the information will be there as well. That will be out before we release the calendar. So if you have the calendar from last year, it's good into the end of February. So our new calendar will take shape, uh, starting after February. So going from March all the way into February of twenty twenty-four, alright? So that calendar will be out soon. We're working to have it done by the end of February. And again, it'll be good into February of the following year, which is twenty twenty-four, okay? Alright, alright, I think that's everything else. Shout out to Don Williams, shalom. Leon Farlow, shalom. JD Israel, shalom. Uh, okay, let's go back. Let me see. I think I've seen some questions there. Let me see. Alright, so Jedediah says, what Bible that includes the Apocrypha would you recommend? I'm gonna pull it up right now for you and I'm gonna tell you which one I recommend, the only one I recommend. If you are a fan of, if you're a fan of the King James Bible. Let me pull it up for you real quick. Uh, here it is, right here. I'm gonna go ahead and show my screen. Alright. This is the Bible I recommend, the New Cambridge Paragab Bible with Apocrypha, and this is the personal size. This one is one thousand six hundred and sixteen pages. It has the preface for the King James. It has the translator notes to the reader from the King James, and it also has a plethora of footnotes, okay? I have it right here, but I'm using it to prop up the camera, actually, so I can't, I can't pull it out and show it to you. It's actually propping up the camera. But next time I go live, I'll, I'll take it and show you on, on the screen why I recommend that. So if you're looking for a King James version of the Bible that has the Apocrypha in it, I only recommend that one, alright? So that's my recommendation, okay? Alright. So Tej Jordan says, yes, what Jesus didn't eat pork, why don't Christians follow that example? Christians don't follow that example because most Christians identify as Gentiles and as identifying as Gentiles believe that the law does not apply to them, okay? Paul says in First Corinthians chapter eleven, verse one, he says, "Follow me as I follow Christ." Christ had to keep the law in order for him to be the unblemished lamb to be offered as the Passover lamb for Israel so that way death, the second death, can pass over Israel, okay? And that's one of the reasons why he came. The scripture says in Matthew chapter one, he came to save his people from their sins. And in Luke chapter three, that he will sit on the throne of his father David, okay? All this is important because all of this then coagulates together. And now it forms what we see in Hebrews where he is the high priest after the order of Machizadec because David was inducted into the order of Machizadec in Psalm one ten. And according to the Machizadec Scroll and the Dead Sea Scrolls, Machizadec is coming to atone for the sins of Israel. And he's gonna come with the sons of light. You'll see this phraseology used by both Yeshua and Paul in the New Testament. And then you'll see Hebrews picks up about the atoning work of Machizadec. So these ideas was already flowing around outside of the New Testament. And then the New Testament also picked up these same things and they ascribed it to Yeshua bar Yoseph, okay? So all this is important, very, very important, okay? So you understand that he has a priestly role and he also has a kingly role. And you'll see that the kings of Canaan, and more particularly, if you look at the Ugaritic tablets, you'll see that the king officiated the sacrifices. He was a high priest, a proxy high priest above the people. And he would give the biggest offering, almost like what you see in Vahika or Leviticus, chapter sixteen. The Ugaritic king, right? He would give the same thing. So that priest and that king role will be merged into one entity according to what the New Testament teaches, and that would be in the personage of Yeshua bar Yoseph and his second advent, right? So according to what's being written, while he was here, he was initiating the new covenant, initiating it. He did not fulfill it completely because there's still things that need to be done. He initiated it. Then he died. Then apparently he offered himself as a martyr, right? Offered himself so that way he can then do the work of the priests after the high order of Machizadec, right? And then doing so, those who subscribe to his word, those who covenant with him, they become the sons of light. And then they're gonna be the ones that returns with Machizadec. Matter of fact, let me go ahead and read this to you. I'm gonna go ahead and read this to you so you can see this. And I've shared this on here before, but I'm gonna do this real quick and I see that some of y'all have some questions, so I'm gonna get to those as well, right? Pull it up. I actually have my book up there. Actually, let me go grab my book instead. Hold on. Alright, so this book here that I got, this is called The Dead Sea Scrolls, A New Translation. And then underneath it says, "A comprehensive translation to the controversial ancient scrolls with material newer before, never, excuse me, never before published or translated, including the most recently released text, okay? I don't know if this is, I don't know if the orientation for me, the orientation on the screen is going the wrong way. It's going the opposite way. So it's kind of hard for me to, to see what was written on there. However, we're gonna go to page five ninety. Page five ninety is the coming of Machizadec and a scroll eleven Q thirteen, right? Page five ninety. Okay, this is it right here. Page five ninety, the coming of Machizadec. Alright, and this goes, read, read what it says. It says, "And concerning the scripture says, 'In this year of Jubilee, you shall return every one of you to your property,'" Leviticus twenty-five and thirteen, "and what is also written, 'And this is the manner of the remission.' Every creditor shall remit the claim that is held against a neighbor, not exacting it of a neighbor who is a member of the community because God's remission has been proclaimed," due to Romans chapter fifteen, verse two. "The interpretation is that it applies to the last days that concerns the captives, just as Isaiah said to proclaim the jubilee to the captives, and whose teachers have been hidden and kept secret even from the inheritance of Machizadec. For, and they are the inheritance of Machizadec, who will return them to what is rightfully theirs. He will proclaim to them the jubilee, thereby releasing them from the debt of all their sins." So the Jubilee, according to the community at Kumram, believes that Machizadec, the figure, the priestly king figure Machizadec, that his job is, there's going to be a jubilee that will be enacted on the earth where he will return and he will alleviate the people from the debt of sin. This is, these are not Christians, for the record, right? And it goes on and says, "This word will thus come in the first week of the Jubilee period that follows nine Jubilee periods. Then the day of atonement shall follow at the end of the tenth Jubilee period, when he shall atone for all the sons of light and the people who are predestined to Machizadec." And it says, "Upon them, for this is the time decreed for the year of Machizadec's favor," Isaiah chapter six, verse twelve. "And for his host together with the holy ones of God, for a kingdom of judgment, just as it is written concerning him in the songs of David. A godlike being has taken his place in the divine council. In the midst of the divine beings he holds judgment, scripture also says about him, 'Over it, take your seat in the highest heaven.' A divine being will judge the people," Psalms chapter seven, verses seven to eight. Concerning what scripture says, "How long will you judge unjustly and show partiality to the wicked?" Say la, Psalms eighty-two and verse two. "The interpretation applies to Bilal and the spirits predestined to him because of all who have, all of them have rebelled, turning from God's precepts and so becoming utterly wicked. Therefore, Machizadec will thoroughly prosecute the vengeance required by God's statutes. In that day, he will deliver them from the power of Bilal and from the power of all the spirits predestined to him. Allied with him will be all the righteous divine beings," Isaiah chapter six, verse thirteen. Allied with him will be all the righteous divine beings, Isaiah, chapter six, verse thirteen. This is that which applies to the divine beings. This right here is talking about the Machizadek figure who is coming back to atone for the sins of Israel. Because he's gonna come back on a jubilee period, and he's going to atone for the sins of Israel, and then a great day of atonement is gonna occur. And then there's gonna be a battle between the sons of light and Bilal and the sons of wickedness. Now let's go ahead and see this terminology in scripture. Okay? Let's pull it up in scripture. First thing I want to put in scripture is the phrase, sons of light. All right, let me zoom in. Let me share my screen. All right. So when you, when you wanna do a word search or look something up in blue letter Bible, you have at the very top right here, you can type it in. And it says, Luke, chapter sixteen, verse eight, so the master commended the unjust do it because he had dealt shrewdly for the sons of this world. And those sons of this world, if they don't transition to become the sons of light, they will be the ones who follow after Bilal. Are more shrewd in their generation than the sons of light, meaning that the way that they deal with secular matters, they deal in a more shrewd way or a more particular way that's commendable than the sons of light. You have to have that even balance. John, chapter twelve, verse thirty six, while you have the light, believe in the light that you may become sons of light. These things Jesus spoke and departed and was hidden from them. Verses alone, chapter five, verse five, you are all sons of light and sons of the day. We are not of the night nor of the darkness. So sons of the night, sons of darkness, sons of this world are the ones that are gonna follow after Bilal. But the sons of light are the ones that's gonna follow after the light, and that is Yeshua bar Yosef and his earthly, physically uh presence when he was here, but now we know him no longer according to the flesh. He is the uh high priest after the order of Machizadek, and those that do a covenant with him, what we call that covenant meal of wine and bread, those who covenant with him, right? They become the sons of light, and then they will be the ones returning with him when he atones for the sins of Israel. And then they clash against Bilal and the sons of night, the sons of darkness, the sons of wickedness. Now we're gonna see Bilal being mentioned also in scripture. Second Corinthians, chapter six, verse fifteen, and what accord has Christ with Bilal? Or what part has a believer with an unbeliever? You see that? Those that follow after the Mashiach and those that follow after Bilal. Bilal's gonna be the one that opposes the Machizadek order. So they're gonna have that clashing that occurs in regards to the atonement of the sons of light, the atonement of Israel. Righteous ones, the ones who are obedient and follow the commandments and keep the testimony of Yeshua. I brought this up before going into the Targum. And what the Targum says in Genesis, chapter three, where it talks about the bruising of the head and the bruising of the heel. The only way that the serpent or the Nakash can affect the children of Israel is if they cease to keep the statutes, the laws, and the commandments. There's someone that says, oh, we can't keep it in captivity. There's someone that says, oh, you can't keep all the statute laws of commandments. Scripture has a different expectation in exile. Nonetheless, I'm trying to show you parallels that we find in what is called the New Testament and what we find in the Dead Sea Scrolls. Okay? That's these girls actually give you some more insight about what was brooding at the time that gave the emergence or to the rise of different motifs we seen uh collated and collected within the scripture of the New Testament. Okay? So let's back off of that for a second. Right? So now, let me go back and see uh what you have going on. Uh, yes, you're right. So book, chapter and verse, let's go to the war scrolls, war scrolls, war scrolls. Let me grab the war scroll. That's the other side. And then you have the pierced Messiah scroll. That's crazy. Pierce Messiah scroll. Hold on, I got a list over here on my cloud source. Let me, let me pull it up. We can find it. Let's see if we can pull it up here. War scroll. There we go. Page one forty six. I'm gonna read it. Um, let's see. I'm probably not gonna read all of it, cause it's probably a lot, and I wanna, do wanna get to some questions in the next thirty minutes or so. But I'm gonna read some of it because it is the continuation, right? All right. So the war scroll, right? This is on page one forty nine. Actually, let me see, hold on. It starts on page one forty seven, actually. Okay? We have a preface, but then we have this here, and it says, for the instructor, the rule of the war, the first attack of the sons of light shall be undertaken against the forces of the sons of darkness, the army of Bilal, the troops of Edom, Moab, the sons of Ammon, the Amalekites, Philistia, and the troops of Keteen of Assyria. Supporting them are those who have violated the covenant. The sons of Lewi, the sons of Judah, the sons of Benjamin, those exiled to the wilderness shall fight against them with blank, because that, that's a fragment, against all their troops, when the exiles of the sons of light return from the wilderness of the peoples to camp in the wilderness of Jeru- of Jerusalem. What you'll see is all these motifs disemerge independent of the so-called New Testament. And we find them also in the New Testament. This was something that's going on in the apocalyptic era in the history of Israel. The apocalyptic era occurred in the latter half of the Grecian captivity, transitioning into the Roman captivity. Okay? And Daniel was one of those apocalyptic literatures that kicked things off, right? It's believed that was, it's fine, the final redaction of form occurred in about two hundred B C E, right? And then it says, then after the battle, they shall go up from that place and the king of Keteen shall enter into Egypt. In his time, he shall go forth with great wrath to do battle against the kings of the north. And in his anger, he shall set out to destroy and eliminate the strength of, of Israel. Then there shall be a time of salvation for the people of God and time of dominion from all, for all the men of his forces, and eternal annihilation for all the forces of Bilal. Then shall be great panic among the sons of Jepheth. Assyria shall fall with no one to come to its aid, and the supremacy of the Keteen shall cease. That wickedness be overcome without a remnant. There shall be no survivors of the sons of darkness. Then the sons of righteousness shall shine to all the ends of the world, continuing to shine forth until the end of the appointed seasons of darkness. It's my style chose war tonight. Really didn't choose war tonight. This is what, this what occurred. But what I'm simply sharing with you is the motif you see in the New Testament is attested outside of the New Testament. When you go to the two Messiah theories within rabbinic Judaism, they tell a similar tale. And that is also seen further in the Dead Sea Scrolls, when you have the Pierce Messiah texts. You're talking about Machizadek coming to atone for the sins. And once the sin atonement is completed, then somebody from the lineage of David is coming on the scene to rule and reign and usher in righteousness. Very interesting that in New Testament, they merge the two figures together. Fascinating. And the reason for that is because it is believed that Psalm one ten shows the induction into the order of Machizadek that the Messiah puts David into. And then David's sons are Kohanim in the text in the Book of Sandy. And then that lineage continues on all the way to it rises up with the one who is chosen, the one who is adopted as a son by the Most High. Because remember, the motif is the king of Israel was the son of God. We see that in Psalms two. And he was also God in the earth, we see in Psalms forty five. So he is the son of God. And that qualitative attribute is then associated with Yeshua bar Yosef and creating the messianic profile, the apocalyptic figure that's coming to fulfill what we see spoken about prophetically in the Neviim of the prophets. And then we get an independent account outside of that from the Dead Sea Scrolls. Also, I encourage you to go and look up the Gabrielle Stone. Gabrielle Stone has nothing to do with the New Testament, the Gabrielle Stone. As you know, I trace my pedigree back to the Ebionites and Nazarenes and the so-called Jewish Christians. Very shrewd study needs to take place in order to fully unpack and fully reveal the understanding of this people group that held on to the law and subscribed to Yeshua as the Messiah. And then you have the two opposing flanking groups of Judaism and Christianity that persecuted this group out of the mix because they held the middle line of truth. Okay? All right. Another good book I'm gonna recommend from Lexim Press, since we on the uh, since we on Lexim and Lexim Publishing is this book here. I recommend everybody to get it. It is called Understanding the Quote-unquote Jewish Roots of Christianity. Biblical, Theological, and Historical Essays on the Relationship Between Christianity and Judaism. You have to get this book. This reorients you back to what was intended. What about that Gabrielle Stone? Let me go ahead and grab that first real quick, cause I wanna show you the apocalyptic age that was ushered in after the Maccabean revolt that people are still in today. Interesting enough. Let's look at the Gabrielle Stone real quick. Let's transition that and I'll, I'll take a couple more questions. Go to that Gabrielle Stone. Let's take a look at the Gabrielle Stone. Some of y'all be like, what? Gabrielle Stone? Some of y'all don't even know what that is. But if you're on the Patreon, I already put y'all on to game, right? But let's take a look at this. I'm gonna show you what was taking place. Also, if you have not already, go ahead and check my blog that I put on the Patreon. Matter of fact, let me show you that blog real quick. It's very fascinating. Uh, let me pull up the blog real quick. Let me pull up, where's my blogs? All right. And this is the blog right here. This is why y'all gotta get Patreon, man. Telling y'all, that's why y'all gotta get Patreon, right? If you don't have it already. Right? And this blog right here is called, Why Was There A Lack Of Contemporary Extra biblical Accounts of Yeshua Bar Yosef? Can Anything Good Come From Nazareth? Uh, and then we go in. You need to see this because what I single out, as you can see in some of these images, and I'm gonna give y'all a little sample, right? I go into the messianic claimants around the time of Yeshua. Judas of Sephoris, son of Hezekiah, the brigand chief in four B C, Simon of Perera, which is four B C, um Athronges, the shepherd of Judea, in four to two B C. Uh Menahem, the grandson of Judas of Sephoris, in sixty-six A D. John of Gishkala, son of Lewi, in A D sixty-seven. Simon Bar Giorda of Gerassa, in A D sixty-eight. Lucius, uh Lucus of Serene, in A D one fifteen, and Simon Ben uh, uh Simon Bar Koba of one into one thirty-five. And it goes into Thaddeus, the Egyptian, and sign prophets and the prophetic movements that occurred, and it also goes a little deeper into Jewish prophets around the time of Jesus. All of this created this apocalyptic circumstantial environment that gave birth to what you see in what's called the Briharsha. Well, a lot of people don't study this stuff because they don't understand. They don't wanna put the text within its proper perspective. Hence why I say, the closer you can get to the language that was spoken colloquially by Yeshua and his followers in his day, which would have been a dialect of Aramaic, is preserved in what we call the Syriac, which is a uh, uh eastern, excuse me, a eastern dialect of Aramaic. Very important. Very important. And in there, you'll see some corrections to what's shown. I'm not gonna say corrections. I would say stems from the original Book of Matthew that was written in the Aramaic tongue of Mattiahu, who was the publican follower of Yeshua bar Yosef and then became an apostle after he was a disciple. But y'all, y'all don't, y'all don't want that. Y'all don't understand that. That's why every time I have conversations with people who disagree with the New Testament for whatever reason, and I say, well, why do you do it? And they pull up all types of pseudo shit. All types of pseudo shit. And I said, look, you can hate, that's fine. You could dislike, but just do it based on the facts. And if you haven't read enough, read more. So the Gabrielle Stone, let me show that real quick and get some questions. Okay? All right. Let me jump down. Right? Here's the stone, right here is the image of the stone, right here, and displaying. And it says, an ancient limestone tablet covered with a mysterious Hebrew text that features the archangel Gabriel is at the center of a new exhibit in Jerusalem, even as scholars continue to argue about what it means. The so-called Gabrielle Stone, a meter, three-foot-tall tablet said to have been found thirteen years ago on the banks of the Dead Sea, features eighty-seven lines of an unknown prophetic text dated as early as the first century B C E at the time of the second Jewish temple. Scholars see it as a portal into the religious idea circulating in the Holy Land in the era when Yeshua was born. Its form is also unique. It is ink written on stone, not carved, and no such religious text has been found in the region. Curators at the Israel Museum, with their first exhibit dedicated to the Son, is opening Wednesday, say it is the most important document found in the area since the discovery of the Dead Sea Scrolls. And most of y'all don't even know anything about that. Fascinating. Sign up for the Patreon. I got the whole article in there that breaks it down for you, and you can take a look into that. Just type in, in the search box, when you log into Patreon, Gabrielle Stone. It'll come up. All right. All right. So we're gonna stop for a second. Let's go ahead and transition to some more questions. All right? Uh, let's see. I see more people in here. Shout out to Mac Ados Lee, Shalom. Shout out to uh Shimon, uh Sameti, Shalom. Uh, let's see. Shout out to Solomon Ben David, Shalom, Lisa Anderson, Shalom, Sis Adaya Israel, Shalom. Uh, let me see. Um, I'm gonna need a new bookshelf. So in the back behind me, uh I'm buying this huge bookcase. It costs like, man, it costs almost a thousand dollars, right? It's gonna go, you see how high this case is gonna go from that high, and it's gonna cover the entire width of that wall behind me. And everything will be, cause I have books everywhere around my house. So I'm gonna have one place where I fill everything up. I had a bookcase before, but it broke because I have so many books. It's just broke. I, I had these temporary shelves right here, and then I have uh bins with books, all books in it. I got like three, four bins that's like this big and this tall with a whole bunch of books in it. Then I got storage in New York with more books in there. Um, it's just, I, I just realized that being a bibliophile allows me to uncover certain things that otherwise would be hidden from our community. And as a servant, I am obligated to present and share whatever I come across to the community. Everybody needs to be on the same page. All right? All right. So let's see, what's going on? Uh, what article you talking about, James? I prefer nobody share anything from the Patreon. Um, have people, encourage people to sign up for the Patreon, right? Because that helps to support this ministry, right? And I've taken due care and diligence to seek out and curate everything that I share on there. I make sure I look at a whole bunch of information, parse out the good stuff, and I put it on there for you. So whether it's my own personal content that I've created, my I P, or whether it's books, articles, or there's audio bibles, whether it's language courses, uh whether it's free stuff that your digital products that you receive from K H M, I've put in all of that as a repository on the Patreon. And I recommend if you want other people to learn about what's there, encourage them to sign up for the Patreon. Because the more people that support the Patreon, the more uh financial resources that we could take in to get more stuff, to get access to more stuff. There's three other organizations that I plan to join this year. And I wanna use the funding, cause these, some of these three organizations are very expensive. Use the funding we get from the Patreon so that we can get access to them, so I can go to more conferences and get more information, give you more insight. That you know when the new conversation is going on, new information and stuff that's being discovered, et cetera. So if you do wanna share it, just share the link on Patreon, not the content, and encourage people to sign up for the Patreon so they can support the ministry, right? Because there's so much stuff on there that I think is important that you get an immediate return on your investment when you pour into the ministry, right? Okay, so um. Word. Yo, Jedidiah, brother. That's no problem, brother. Uh, we can do that. Uh, it just would have to wait into at least uh the end of February, March. Uh, it just would have to wait until at least, uh, the end of February, March. So if you're interested in that, this is gonna be really big. If you want me to fly you out, you know, put you in a hotel for a night and you just come in here and just work on this, no problem. You just gotta sign an NDA because you come into my personal space. And I don't like revealing my personal information anywhere on the internet because these trolls are crazy. Uh, but sure, if you want to come and want me to contract you out to do the work, brother, no problem. No problem. I appreciate that, alright? Alright, so. Alright, so let me see. I'm a shepherd. You said, First Samuel nineteen thirteen. Why did, uh, Michal use goat hair, which is straight, instead of sheep, which is woolly for David? Uh, let's go to First Samuel, chapter nine, verse thirteen. First Samuel, chapter nine, and verse thirteen. Okay, we gonna start at verse eleven for context and we share the screen. Okay. As they went up the hill to the city, they met young women coming out to draw water and said to them, is the seer here? They answered, he is. Behold, he is just ahead of you. Hurry. He has come just now to the city because the people have a sacrifice today on the high place. As soon as you enter into the city, is this the right one? This right scripture you gave me? First Samuel nineteen, my bad. First Samuel nineteen. I knew something was off. First Samuel nineteen. Okay, let's read that. Let's read that. Alright. First Samuel nineteen and verse thirteen. Alright, so that verse eleven. Saul sent messengers to David's house to watch him, that he might kill him in the morning. But Michal, David's wife, told him, if you do not escape with your life tonight, tomorrow you will be killed. So Michal led David down through the window and he fled away and escaped. Michal took an image and laid it on the bed and put a pillow of goat's hair at its head and covered it with the clothes. And when Saul sent messages to take David, she said, he is sick. Then Saul sent the messengers to see David, saying, bring him up to me in the bed that I may kill him. And when the message came in, behold, the image was in the bed and the pillow of goat's hair at its head. Saul said to Michal, why have you deceived me thus and let my enemy go so that he has escaped? And Michal answered Saul, he said to me, let me go. Why should I kill you? So your question is, why would he choose goat hair, which you're saying is straight? And I'm gonna pull something up real quick, as opposed to sheep. Well, you gotta understand what was, uh, whatever, whatever was available in the flock at the time that they used. Um, again, it wasn't intended to fully replicate David, obviously, because the item they put under the covers wasn't his body either. It was just to make it look like him from afar to buy some time, right? So let me do this. Let me show you this real quick. Let me see if I could pull this up. Um, so, let's see. Okay, I want to, I want to share this with you real quick. I want to share this with you. Remember, there are different variants of goats, right? That existed in the ancient East of domesticated goats. Uh, what I would recommend for you to get is this source right here. It's called All Creatures, Great and Small Living Things in the Bible. It goes through, uh, all, not all, but most of the fauna that is explained in the text. If you go into this book, that fauna has to do with the animals in the text. And we go into this book and we go to goat, right, which is on the mammals. Hold on, let me pull this down for a second. Alright. And then we go here. This is on, this is on page forty-seven. There's your goat. Okay. Uh, so this goes into detail about the different goats. Uh, goats are fairly small animals with hooves. They were domesticated very early in the Middle East. Both long-haired and short-haired breeds were known. The former being raised for its hair and a ladder for its milk, meat, and skin. The short-haired type was probably the Nubian goat, the Capra hircus amambrika, a floppy-eared breed with black and white or brown and white patches. The long-haired breed was also floppy-eared and the Angora type, the Capra hircus, uh, Angorensis, uh, it was usually black with long silky fur. But he passed it in the Bible seemed to liken this hair to human hair, Songs of Solomon, four, one, six, five, and First Samuel nineteen and thirteen. Right? Then it goes on to the importance of goats, uh, the scriptures with the goats, its significance and symbolism, its translation, et cetera, right? But I'm gonna show you this. Remember, there's two major variants. There's the short-haired one and the long-haired one, okay? The short-haired one is the one that you butcher for meat. Right? I'm gonna show you what that one looks like. So I think what the argument is, is that he had straight, the, the goat had straight hair, so that, that would mean that David had straight hair. That's not what the text is saying at all. However, I do want to show you this, right? I'm gonna show you another one of the variants that was actually domesticated in that region, so you can see for yourself. Okay, let me share this. See this? See the hair on this goat right here? There are different varieties. We don't know which variety was used according to this text in order to simulate the hair that they put in the bed to resemble David, okay? There's tons of varieties and because of what we call the genetic pool, the, the plethora of uh, different phenotypes, right? That can display as goat hair, uh, amongst the different, you know, uh, pastors that existed at that time. It would depend on what, which one was sourced. We don't know. We don't even know what color it was. It just says goat's hair, right? So to use, if anybody uses that as an example to say that David had straight hair is ridiculous. That's, that's a very ridiculous claim. Nevertheless, there are people that make that argument. And I don't think that that is fair because what is, what the attempt of it to do is just to show that he is sleeping. And who sleeps with the cover over their face and this leaves their hair out? I mean, just think about that. Alright, obviously, they saw something was off. And we never get in the text any full details of what David's hair looks like, like as far as the shape of the hair, right? Now, we say he was ruddy, right? But as far as his hair texture, we don't get specific or explicit data on that, right? So I think it's kind of a reach if somebody uses that otherwise, alright? Alright, so thank you for that question, brother. I'm gonna keep going on. Um, let me see. Uh, let's see, what else we got here? Um, alright. So here's Abigail says, I want to ask if Ra and El are pagan deities, what is the correct name we should call ourselves? Okay, so Yisrael has nothing to do with Ra. Ra in Hebrew can mean calamity. Or Ra or Re in Egyptian means the sun god or the sun itself. Depending upon how the, uh, logogram looks or the determinative, we call determinative. So we have a logogram and we have a determinative. And that will indicate if you see the seated deity, we'll indicate if it's talking about Ra or Re, the sun god, S-U-N god. Or it'll let you know if it's talking about the literal sun itself. So you get context and also you see a determinative in, in, in what we call Medjunecha or Hieroglyphics, right? So Ra has nothing to do with Yisrael. Yisrael is a Hebrew word, right? It has L in it, which is, makes it a theophoric name because it includes the name of a god in the name. And then you have a attribute that is syntaxed to the deity's name so that when the name is called, it invokes that essence or that characteristic of the deity when the name is called, right? So let's go into, let's pull it up. And we're gonna go into the actual word in a lexicon. And I have a lexicon over here as well, but it's under a whole bunch of heavy books. Um, so I'm just gonna leave that alone. Just use the one that we got online. I'm just gonna use the one we got online, right? And we're gonna go into it and I'm gonna show you on the screen. Alright, let's share my screen. Okay, here's a word right here. Yisrael, Yis, or Yish, Rael, right? God strives, another name of Jacob. It says, the origin is from Sarah and El. Sarah, going to the word Sarah, or Sarah means to persist, exert oneself, persevere. You see that? It's a syntax of two different verbs. It's a verbal noun. Right here, you have Sheen Re, uh, and you got, um, excuse me, Sheen Resha. Sheen Resha. This is the root. You see that? And then you have El, right? This Yod prefix could be first person, excuse me, uh, third-person masculine singular imperfect. It says, it, it could be he who strives with El. And obviously, we see that that is what happened in Genesis, chapter thirty-two. So the name came out of an event that occurred, which is typically what you see of names in ancient Near Eastern literature. This has nothing to do with Ra, right? Let me show you. I'll show you this. And the, the name Israel is also attested extra biblically during the Iron Age period and other inscriptions, right, outside of the Bible, right? So it's attested in Tell Dan, it's attested in the Moab Stone, it's attested in various delay from, uh, Assyria. So it's attested outside the scripture. So this is what the people were known as, right? Um, so looking here, Isaiah, chapter forty-five and one, right, excuse me, not forty-five and one, I'm bugging. Isaiah chapter forty-five and seven, I don't know why I defaulted to one, but let's go down to seven. Alright, we're gonna read here in English. Forty-five and seven says, I form light and create darkness. I make well-being and create calamity. I am Yotei Wafe who does all these things. We click on seven. Let me click on interlin here, so we can parse out and hone into the word itself. And the word is Ra right here. As you can see, it is Resh Ain, not Resh Aleph. Resh Ain and there's a patash underneath the Resh, which is, looks much different than what we saw. Let's go back. Let's go back. Right? Looks much different than what we see here, which has a race comments in Aleph. It's not the same thing. So this has nothing to do with a sun deity at all, okay? Alright, so hopefully that answers your question. Let me see. That sounds excellent, my brother. I'm all for it. Email us at kingdomharbinger@gmail.com. Kingdomharbinger@gmail.com. All the contact information is in the description below, okay? Uh, thank you, Sis Adaya Yisrael. You are a thousand percent correct. And again, it's only through the study of ancient flora, right, or we call bioarchaeology, right? Or zoo archaeology more specifically, right? That we can actually examine the types of animals that existed at that time to see if those variants do exist today. And again, you have a plethora of different types of goats, right? So you're a hundred percent right and exact with that, alright? Uh, let's see. Shout out to Lion from Zion seven, 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 shalom. Uh, let's see, um. Trying to go up some, let me see. Shout out King, what's going on, brother? Yo, hit me up, brother. Hit me up. Shoot me, shoot me a text. We gotta get up again, brother. You are in Atlanta. We have to meet up again. Let's go have some, uh, family time with each other's families, hang out like we did before, my brother. Shout out to Ben Cole in the building. What's going on, my brother? This is my brother right here. Excellent artist, brother. Post your link in the chat. I want the people to support your latest project, my brother, alright? Excellent artist right there in the community. Uh, let's see. Peace be still. No, I have not. Uh, my position is that Gentiles can receive salvation, right? The ones that cleave unto Israel now so that they can serve Israel in the kingdom and not be on the outskirts of the kingdom, right? The ones who refuse to ally or Israel, refuse to serve Israel and continue to persecute the children of Yah. Those on the outside will reluctantly acquiesce to the rule of the rod of iron from the son of David, who's gonna sit on the throne. And the Gentiles inside the kingdom are gonna be the ones serving Israel. The ones on the outside will also serve Israel. But they will be ruled and reigned and they will be treated as enemies. And if they refuse to do things like come to the feast of Tabernacles, we've seen Zecharis up to fourteen, then a plague of Egypt will come upon them. But the other Gentiles who are within the walls of the kingdom, who are serving Israel, who are tending their flocks, who are dressing their vineyards, who are bowing down and presenting items to Israel, who is serving Israel according to Torah, not the chattel slavery that you see in America, that's unrighteous. So I don't subscribe to that. That is unrighteous because that is not what Torah dictates. If you beat a slave and his tooth falls out, you gotta let the slave go. That's Torah, right? And you cannot oppress the stranger that is among you. That's Torah. So my position is that Gentiles do and will have salvation. They will. They'll escape the fate of those who resist the children of Israel, resist the God of Israel. Those Gentiles will get the privilege of serving Israel according to righteousness as depicted in Torah. That's what the position of those Gentiles on the inside. The ones on the outside, they're done. The ones on the inside, they're good. After everything culminates, when that spirit or that beast and Hashatan, the adversary, is released and takes all the known nations to war against the son of David on the throne and the children of Israel within the kingdom and the Gentiles with them, they will be utterly destroyed. And when it comes time for the new heavens and the new earth, not by kingdom, millennial kingdom standard, but the renovation by fire that the earth goes through, and then we have an output of what's occurring, which is a new heavens and new earths. And you'll see New Jerusalem coming down from the sky and settling in that region. And the domain and the twelve gates of the trials of Israel will be established. Those Gentiles who allied with Israel will be the ones cleaved unto Israel and they will go through the gates along with the Israelites, those Gentiles. But they must serve Israel now and they must serve Israel in the kingdom in order for them to receive that reward. Now, that is my position. I've taught this several times on this channel and I don't move from that position. Gentiles have to be saved in order to save, serve Israel, so that way all the fulfillment of the Neba In with the proper sayings, especially in the book of Isaiah about the end times can be fulfilled. Isaiah fifty-five eleven says that his word, when he sends it out, it is not returned to him void, so these things have to happen. So when you hear Christians with replacement theology and superstitionism saying, oh, all of that is completed in Christ, then you're making Yah liar. So that is my position and no, I have not debated them on that. Um, if it comes up, we'll have a, a nice little conversation on it. But no, I haven't debated them on it. But that's my position. I've made it clear. Uh, continue to put that out there, that there is salvation for Gentiles because Gentiles have to serve Israel in the kingdom. And if those Gentiles who are serving, you know, Israel in the kingdom are doing so according to the letter of the law, then those same Gentiles will be redeemed in the end, right? Because Yah is not saving nations. He's not saving any other nation. He's only coming for the nation of Israel. Now, individuals from out of other nations can cleave unto the nation of Israel and have their identity within the identity of Israel. But there will always be a distinction. We see that even in the law. There are laws that are only for Gentiles. That means there's always a distinction. There's always a hierarchy. People don't like that, but there, it's gonna be a hierarchy in the kingdom. That's just how it works. Israel's gonna be on the thrones, ruling and reigning and judging. And then the Gentiles inside the kingdom who cleaved unto Israel, those are the ones that will be redeemed. In the book of Micah, chapter four, it talks about the Gentiles coming to the mountain of Yah to go after the law, because the law's gonna come forth from out of Zion. And then you're gonna have these Gentiles who are grabbing on a skirt of a Jew because they wanna learn about their God. That's just what it is. I'm just telling you what it is. Right? That's scripture. I could probably do a, a separate, uh, if you want to do a separate lecture on that, I could probably lecture on that. Go through all the textual data and then go all, all the extra biblical data that supports that position. Right? And kind of give you an understanding of the apocalyptic literature as its view from the lens of the indigenous peoples who put forth the material. And hand it to y'all on a silver platter, because I love y'all that much and all of us should have this knowledge. Thank you so much, Simple Training. I appreciate that. My brother Apothecary Customs, shalom. What is your view on the differences and the difference between the accounts of Christ keeping Passover and Matthew, Mark, Luke versus John? I would say that these are different Passovers happening at different times and different events are recorded by different, uh, authors, right? Or wherever the accounts come from. For example, Mark wasn't believed to be an eyewitness. He was believed to be a disciple of Peter, right? John and Matthew were believed to be direct apostles, uh, assuming disciples who turned apostles, who actually were eyewitnesses, right? And then you have Luke, Luke is not an eyewitness. Luke is getting third-hand information from the apostles or the apostles of the apostles or the disciples of the apostles. And he was a traveling companion of Paul. So he is a tertiary witness, right? Mark is a secondary witness and Matthew and John are a prime or primary witnesses. So when those early, uh, what they call Jewish Christians started to emerge, we see them in Acts chapter twenty-one where James is over them, right? They only held to the book of Matthew. They did not receive anything that Paul put out because they had misunderstandings with what Paul's ministry was. But however, they were keeping the law and they subscribed to Yeshua as the Mashiach. And that was problematic. But guess what? James put Paul in check. So Paul can show those Jews that he still keeps the law. So if that's the case, then we gotta go back and reassess what Paul's talking about whenever he references the law. Is he a hypocrite? Because apparently people will give me Galatians and other scriptures where Paul is condemning circumcision, but yet he circumcised somebody, Acts chapter sixteen. And then in Acts twenty-one, he goes through the Nazarite process and pays for other brothers so they can shave their heads and go through the rest of the rituals so he can show that he lives in observance of the law. People can say, oh, but he's not doing that for justification. Oh, he's doing that because he says to the Jews, I became the Jews, but these are believers. These are not the Jews who did not believe. James had the power and authority. He's son Paul. Yo, yo, you see, you see the believers, man zealous for the law? Yeah, they're gonna hear that you was here and they saying that, yo, Paul, um, you telling Jews amongst the Gentiles not to keep, not to forsake the law? And remember, in some of these places that Paul was sending his epistles, they had mixed congregations. They had Jews and Gentiles there. So you saying that Paul was telling the Jew? No, let's go to first Corinthians, chapter seven. This, this reads scripture, man. We gotta read scripture. We gotta harmonize the text. Let's go first Corinthians chapters. And then I'll grab another question and then my time will be up with you. First Corinthians chapter seven. If you enjoy, please hit the thumbs up button, hit the thumbs up button. If you're enjoying, if you're brand new, hit the subscribe button, go back and check out the archives. Please share this video everywhere. And if you want resources for all the things that I'm mentioning on here, go to our Patreon, www.patreon.com backslash Divine Prospect. It's the best way that you can financially support this ministry and at the same time receive immediate return on your investment with the plethora of what? Resources and posts and all types of stuff, because that's the three sixty-five, twenty-four, seven after party. Once this screen goes off. All right. Let's go ahead and get first Corinthians chapter seven. Let's see if Paul was telling, watch this, because some of y'all are gonna bring Paul up. And what I want y'all to do, and this is why resources are very, very important. Here's a resource right here. I'm gonna show you on the screen real quick. All right, here's a resource right now. Check it out. This book is called A Survey of the New Testament by Robert H. Gundry. Now, what I wanna do in here, right? Is that this book has a timeline. This book has a timeline. Okay? Now, what we want, what I wanna see, when I wanna show y'all real quick. Let's go to the book of Corinthians. Let me go to the book of Corinthians. The book of Thessalonians is believed to be the first epistles of Paul dealing with eschatology. And here we get first Corinthians. If you don't have this book, you need to order it right now from Amazon. Because when we do our classes, which is coming very soon, you need this resource. All right? And there's several other resources, uh, and tools that you need. And if you sign up for the Patreon, the Patreon gives you all of that. All right? All right. So let's do this. I'm gonna show you something, okay? All right, first Corinthians. It says here, time and place of writing first Corinthians then is really the second letter um, written by Paul to the church in Corinth. He writes it from the city of Ephesus during his third missionary journey. The end of his staying, uh, there has nearly come for he is already planning to leave. Uh, some have translated sixteen and ten when Timothy comes and inferred that Timothy will carry the letter to Corinth. But Acts nineteen twenty-two says that Paul sent two of his helpers, Timothy and Arastus to Macedonia while he stayed in the province of Asia where Ephesus is located a little longer. This statement suggests that Timothy has gone to Macedonia by the time of writing and supports a better translation of first Corinthians sixteen and ten. If Timothy comes from Macedonia to you in Corinth, with Timothy carrying the letter, Paul would hardly write if. Paul tried to induce Apollos, a very important figure to visit Corinth and probably intended to send first Corinthians with him, but Apollos refused, so that carrier remains unknown. So as you can see, this is the second set of, of epistles that Paul sent out after Thessalonians. Why am I saying this? Because I want you to keep the timeline in mind. Get the timeline for Acts chapter fifteen. This book gives you the timeline. I'm not gonna go to all that right now. I just want you to scripture in it, first Corinthians, chapter seven, because all this stuff had to be harmonized. So we're gonna see. Because some people say, oh, Paul, he, he's being a Jew to the Jews. You wanna see the book against this? No problem. Here it is. A Survey of the New Testament, fifth edition. Go on the Patreon, you get all the tools. I have them all here, right here, all the tools, books and resources you need to study and so forth. Or you can go back to the replay and just pause and you'll be able to see it. All right? Uh, Bo Yak Asha. Um, yeah, thank you for that. Um, yeah, thank you for that. But yeah, we're gonna have to, I'll have to discuss that on another live. So make sure that you subscribe, hit that bell notification. So when we go live, jump on and we can continue to have that conversation. This book right here is a survey of the Old Testament, right? By Andrew E. Hill and John H. Walton. This is the Old Testament version. This is the third edition. And this is the New Testament version. This is the fifth edition. Okay? All right. So let's do this. Matter of fact. Got a million books over here. All right, let me see. I'll show this to y'all real quick. Okay? Make it very clear, this will be clearer than going through the survey, right? Look at the date there. The date for first Corinthians is fifty-five A.D. Okay? Now let's go to Acts. And this book here, Cultural Background Study Bible. You must have this in your collection as well. All right? So this was written by Luke in about sixty-three A.D. But the events take place much earlier. Okay? And let me see if I have the timeline here. Quick one I could show to you. All right, let's see. Um. Now this is not the timeline that I wanted, but nonetheless. Oh, I'm gonna show you this too, since I'm just looking at it right now. Since the brother asks about the Passover, right? In this book, it has a suggested harmony of the gospels. The diet test around is an example of a harmony gospel where it puts all the gospels together in chronological order. Okay? In here, it gives you the references to all the Passovers you mentioned and show you how that can be harmonized. Okay? So let's go to first Corinthians, chapter seven. Enough on this. And again, please subscribe, hit the thumbs up button if you're enjoying the content. So we can get this everywhere. Share this video everywhere. We'll be live again at least twice this week is mine, is my goal, Thursday and Friday. So please make sure you are tuned in and I can get more of your questions. Or if I have something I wanna teach or share, I'll be able to do so for y'all as well. I'm back on YouTube, fam. Back. Be back like you never missed a beat. All right. Let me show you first Corinthians, chapter seven. And let's deal with this. Okay? Check this out. First Corinthians chapter seven, verse seventeen. Only let each person lead the life that the Lord has assigned to him and to which God has called him. This is my rule and all the churches keep, listen to what he's saying. Was anyone at the time of his call already circumcised? Let him not seek to remove the marks of circumcision. What is the mark of circumcision? Obviously you cannot put the foreskin back on the head of your private part because it's gone. So he's not somebody anything literal. The marks of circumcision is keeping the law. That means you are part of the covenant, what they call the mosaic covenant. And he goes on to say, was anyone at the time of his call uncircumcised? Let him not seek circumcision. Okay? Talking about the Gentiles. But neither circumcision counts for anything nor uncircumcision, but what? Keeping the commandments of God. This is passing. Each one should remain in the condition in which he was called. Were you a bond servant when called? Do not be concerned about it, but watch this. But if you can gain your freedom, avail yourself of the opportunity. Now, Paul says a lot of comments like this, as you know, and the Negro Bible, right? The slave master. They pick all of Paul's verses where it says obey your masters and all of that, but they never show this. But if you can gain your freedom, avail yourself of the opportunity. If you can revoke and get your freedom, do it. If you can flee and get your freedom, you do it. If you get involved in politics to get your freedom, he says, if you can gain it, avail yourself to the opportunity. It's very interesting. We have people in the so-called conscious community that like to select pastor on the scriptures, but they don't read this. This is, okay. So let's keep going. For he who was called in the Lord as a bond servant is a freed man of the Lord. Likewise, he was free, was called to be, is a bond servant of Christ. You were bought with a price, do not become bond service a man, so brothers, in whatever condition each was called there, let him remain with God. Paul is not speaking against the law. But it was misinterpreted that he was, and this is why you see the history of the so-called Jewish Christians stemming from Acts twenty-one that give Paul a bad rep because they don't understand what Paul was doing. And then the writer of second Peter's comes along and tries to correct that to say Paul's letters is hard to be understood. The harmony is there. And this is a battle that I face on Clubhouse, trying to show the harmony of the text. People come all, all this inconsistencies in text and this and this and that. And then we went into the genealogy and I explained that to them, they couldn't deal with that. Aginethen was used in texts. It's supposed to tone, which is used in Luke. Aginethen is used of the word beget. We also see that in the Septuagint in Matthew chapter one and in Luke chapter three, it's not using the word aginethen. It's used in a different word, which is very fascinating when it talks about Joseph's, uh, father was Helot. But then we see he is begotten by Jacob in Matthew, chapter one. All of that can be harmonized. The events that you see by the different eyewitnesses, all of that can be harmonized. I'm trying to explain to you that harmonization gospels have always existed. They didn't see any contradictions. Let me show, let me give you an example of that, right? And let me show this to you. This is a quick, a quick search. I actually have this on the Patreon, actual book, if you wanna read it, diet test around. But let me show you this in the close out. Okay? Diet test around, right? The most prominent early gospel harmony and was created by Tation and Assyrian early Christian apologists and ascetic. Tation sought to command all the textual material he found in the, excuse me, in the four gospels, Matthew, Mark, Luke and John and to a single coherent narrative of Jesus' life and death. However, and in contrast, in contradistinction to most later gospel harmonists, Tation appears not to have been motivated by any aspiration to validate the four separate canonical accounts or to demonstrate that as they stood, they could each be shown as being without inconsistency or error. That wasn't his goal, but we see other gospel harmonies occur. He was one of the earliest ones who attempted. And if you do research on gospel harmonies, there's several of them out there that have resolved the so-called inconsistencies. He just did it from the Syriac lineage. And I subscribe to the Old Syriac Synaticus Palimpsest, which was found in St. Captain's monastery in the peninsula of Sinai, because that is the closest we can get to the Aramaic book of Matthew, the Old Syriac Synaticus Palimpsest. This book right here, it's called the Original Gospels, right here. It pulls from the Old Sirius, Syriac, uh, Synaticus Palimpsest. And you'll see that on the back. Let me close this so you can see on the back. Right? So it tells you right here, Matthew from a late second century Aramaic text, just like what Jesus spoke. Okay? All right. So we're gonna close out the show, family. I know y'all have tons more questions. Eric Tinsley said, keep the commandments, Israel. Let's go to this. Let me go, let me give you two scriptures. First one is from here. Let's close out on this. Ecclesiastes chapter twelve, verse thirteen. The end of the matter, all has been heard. Fear God and keep his commandments, for this is the whole duty of man, for God will bring every deed into judgment with every secret thing, whether good or evil. The book of John, chapter twenty. Jump down. Verse thirty. Now Yeshua did many other signs in the presence of the disciples, which are not written in this book, but these are written so that you may believe that Yeshua is Hamashiach, the son of God, and that by believing you may have life in his name. And the reason why you have life in his name, because if you are indebted to your sins and you are a captive of your sins, you cannot have life. You need a jubilee to separate you from your captors and return you back to your inheritance. This is what Yeshua came to do. And when we see the ministry of Yeshua as laid out in the book of Hebrews and we take it and corroborate what we read from the Dead Sea Scrolls, we understand full and clear what Yeshua came to do. And let's read two more scriptures from the synoptic gospels in regards to Yeshua's ministry. So we can close off Matthew, chapter one, and let's jump down. Matthew, chapter one, and let's jump down all the way to verse, verse twenty-one, okay? She will bear a son, and you shall call his name Yeshua, for he will save his people from their sins. How so? As a high priest after the order of McKizadec. He offered himself so he can get the office of high priests and do the atonement work. And then in Luke, chapter three. Well, Luke chapter, not chapter three. Let's, let's, let's start off with Luke chapter, let's go to Luke chapter, Luke chapter one. Jump down, not chapter, Luke chapter one, alright? And we gonna jump down. We gonna go to verse thirty-one. And behold, you shall conceive in your woman, bear a son, and you shall call his name Yeshua. He will be great, and he will be called the son of the most high, and the Lord God will give to him the throne of his father David, and he will reign over the house of Jacob forever, reign over the house of Jacob, reign over the house of Jacob forever, and of his kingdom there will be no end. That's scripture. Let's see what Yeshua says finally in the book of John. John, chapter ten, let's jump down. We working, close out on a good note. Love you, fam, right? John, chapter ten, verse thirty-four. Yeshua answered them, isn't that written in your law? I said, you are gods. If you call them gods whom the word of God came, and scripture cannot be broken, do you say of him whom the Father consecrated and sent into the world? You are blasphemy, because I said, I am the son of God. Not a Trinity, not a trite godhead. I'm not a oneist Pentecostal, saying I'm the father that put on a flesh shoe and now gotta learn how to be a human. None of that is said here, fam. I am the son of God. If I am doing the works of my Father, then you do not believe me. But if I do them, even though you do not believe me, believe the works that you may know and understand that the Father is in me and I am in the Father, is the physical flesh and blood in the Father? No. So that means something else is taking place. So let's slow down for a second, and let's end this off. Why is the son of God, as we can see the archetype in Psalm chapter two and Psalm chapter forty-five, he has been adopted by the Father, as we can see in Matthew, chapter three, during the baptism, and now he is being presented to give his ministry because his purpose is to inherit the nations. Because of Psalm eighty-two, which we see reference here, and the scripture cannot be broken, is that the sons of Al, who were given and divided their inheritance based on Deuteronomy thirty-two, verse eight and nine, did not handle their business. So now the Father has given the Son all his inheritance, and that is means all the territory of the earth, all the peoples of earth, and they may bow down and serve the Son of God, who is the direct agent that represents the Father here on the earth and at the right hand, and when he descends in his second advent to establish the throne on the earth, and we will all be subject unto him. And Yah gets all the glory, according to first Corinthians, chapter fifteen, that the Son, after he put all the enemies under his foot, so like the most I did do David, he will hand the kingdom back to the Father, so that we know that the Father is supreme. Much love and blessings, my family. I love you, Ms. Paka. If you enjoyed this, please hit the thumbs up button, share the video. If your brand's new, make sure you subscribe and support the ministry. We have ways to support it across the screen. If you need anything from us, and we can help you in any way, shape or form, email us at kingdomharmonia@gmail.com, and I will see you guys on the next livestream. Much love to your family. I look forward to speaking to you again. Peace and shalom.